Everybody, I call the meeting to order. It's nice to see everybody here this evening. I'd like to remind everybody to please silence your electronic devices. And if you would, please stand and join me in the invocation and the pledge. Lord, as we begin our meeting tonight, we remember the brave men who sacrificed so much in the cause of freedom on this day in 1944. Let us honor their memory today by exercising the freedom of self-governance that they so selflessly advanced. Help us, Lord, to be good stewards of this freedom and to do our part to make our city, our state, and our country a better place for all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And so, we'll start out with our Fernandez Fun Fact. I think, no, 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 I'm just saying, that's what we'll call it from now. I think that has a nice ring to it. So I think it's Councilmember Abel's turn to present us with a fun fact concerning our city.
We can call it an Abel Fun Fact tonight.
Okay.
Anyway, my fun fact is about Cody Fowler. He was born in Arlington, Tennessee, in 1892, and he was the son of Maude Fowler, who Fowler Avenue is named after. Both mother and son played pivotal roles in the early days of Temple Terrace, with Maude Fowler serving as the first vice mayor and Cody Fowler drafting the original charter that incorporated the city. He served as city attorney, and in 1928, he served a term as mayor. Regionally, Cody Fowler made a significant impact as well. In Tampa, he chartered First Federal Bank, which provided home loans before there were other mortgage providers in the area available. He was known for representing non-white clients in court, which was unusual at the time. During the 1950s, he also worked on cracking down on the graft, corruption, and organized crime that permeated Tampa's political system. Significantly, he served as the chairman of the Florida Biracial Commission and the Tampa Biracial Commission, which became a driving force behind desegregation in the Tampa area. He was known for his calm approach to problems and his belief that integration was necessary for society to move forward. His leadership, along with African-American leaders such as A. Leon Lowry, helped guide the peaceful integration of Tampa's lunch counters in the 1960s and also broaden hiring practices in the area businesses for people of color seeking employment. He served as the president of the American Bar Association in 1950, and in 1951, Tampa's civitan club named him their Citizen of the Year, which is among the most prestigious honors awarded in Tampa. He continued to practice law in his local practice until his death in 1975. Newspapers across the state celebrated the life of the genteel southerner who did not hesitate to speak out against what he felt were unfair and illegal laws and traditions that plagued both the country and his adopted home. And his home still stands. It's on Burlingame, I think. I'm not sure about that, but the rest of it's factual.
Good. Thank you. That was really good. I did not know a lot of that about him. Of course, I knew about his connection with our city's founding, but I didn't know some of that. It's interesting. Sounds like Atticus Finch.
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Good. Thank you. So first up, we have a proclamation for Eddie Davis Day. Would you please approach the podium, Mr. Davis? You're looking sharp tonight, sir. We are very proud of Mr. Davis. He is a very long-term employee here at the City of Temple Terrace. We're very proud that he's still with us in all of his accomplishments, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about Eddie and all that he's done for our city. Eddie Davis commenced his employment in the City Grounds Department on April 13, 1983. His mechanical skills were immediately recognized by his supervisor, and along with his grounds duties, he was put in charge of lawn equipment repair. In the 1980s, the grounds crew was larger than it is today because crew members mostly pushed mowers to maintain the grounds. So manpower was needed and equipment inventory was considerable. Since Eddie's talent for equipment repair was noticeable, he was eventually transferred to the Streets Department, and his duties were expanded to include repair and maintenance of the Streets' equipment. Although he was technically working as a mechanic, his title did not reflect his abilities, and he decided to enroll in trade school to earn a degree. For three years, Eddie worked full-time during the day and attended trade school at night. At the end of the three-year period, he had not only earned his AS degree in automotive applied science, but he also had obtained his ASE certifications. Although he had obtained his degree and certification, the city did not have a mechanic position vacancy, so despite the fact that he liked working for the city, Eddie contemplated searching elsewhere for a mechanic's position. Prior to making that decision, he made one last attempt to secure a mechanic's position with the city, and he sent his transcripts and ASE certification to the Director of Public Works. Shortly thereafter, the director at the time, Bob Fernandez, called Eddie into his office and informed him that he was so impressed with Eddie's ability and accomplishments that even though a vacancy didn't exist, he was going to promote Eddie to mechanic. Over the years, Eddie has worked his way up the ladder to his current position of fleet maintenance foreman, earning awards such as Employee of the Year along the way. As foreman, he is single-handedly responsible for the maintenance of approximately 220 city vehicles with a collective value of $25 million. This is not in the notes, but I will tell you, having worked in local government for a very long time, that Temple Terrace drains every last drop of blood out of these vehicles, too. We get way more life out of a piece of equipment or a car than most municipalities in the area. I can tell you about that. Eddie has an exceptional work ethic, and while at work, he has seen early morning sunrises and late-day sunsets. He's worked weekends, holidays, and through hurricanes, which exemplifies his commitment to the city and to the community. When asked why he has stayed so long with the city, Eddie will tell you that it's not about the money, but it's about his commitment to the people and the city he has grown to love. So Eddie, we are so proud of your accomplishments, and we're so fortunate, not only as your council, but also as citizens of the city, to have employees of your caliber working here. So would you like to say a few words?
Sure, sure. Absolutely. One of the things that I have to say first and stuff is, no one does anything by themselves. It wasn't my accomplishment. It was the people that was around me that was helping me accomplish things and stuff. And it's just like, you know, I've got some current employees that I work with here in the night that's helping celebrate this with me, and I got some former ones and stuff. And I wanted to make sure and stuff, I got some of the former ones here because they were instrumental in me and my success, too. It wasn't just me. It was past bosses, past coworkers and all of that, past councils for that matter and stuff that gave me that vision and stuff. Because one of the stories I also tell is when I first started here, Temple Terrace had dirt roads. That's what I called them. And I was quickly told, uh-uh, uh, there are shellroads in Temple Terrace. And I was like, wow, that's kind of, you know. But then I grew to see that vision and stuff. It's not to look at things as what they are, but look at what you can take them and make them be. And that's what I tried to do with our fleet services is whatever I was asked to do, my team was asked to do, that's what we went and done. You know, with that, I want to say thank you, council. And one other thing, James, I'm coming after you.
Oh, no. No, no, don't go anywhere yet. So we have a proclamation here, which I'm not going to read the whole thing because a lot of the language is the same.
Sure.
But we are doing something in your honor that we don't typically do, and that is that we are proclaiming tomorrow, June 7, to be Eddie Davis Day throughout the City of Temple Terrace. So that's a great honor. We also understand the employees are having a little get-together, but I do want everybody in the city to know that Abbott's Frozen Custard in the redevelopment area has made a special blend of ice cream that apparently is one of Eddie's favorites. And so, it will be available for sale tomorrow on Eddie Davis Day, and it's called Nuts About Eddie. So I don't know. I haven't tasted it. But I encourage all of you to visit Abbott's down there and make a request to get this special limited edition ice cream. So I don't know how many more decades you're going to stick around, so I don't know how long this ice cream's going to be available.
James has got 43, so I'm at least got to stick.
I know, but he's still serving, too. So.
Mayor, can I have a minute for a story?
Sure.
Sorry about this story, but this is something that shows how Eddie does a good job as being a mechanic. One of the few times the Parks and Recreation got a new truck, and I had to go over to Clearwater to look at some bathrooms. So I'm driving it, and I'm going down, I don't know, Hillsborough Avenue, someplace like that, and all of a sudden I get a warning code that it's got a low tire. So I call Eddie on the cell phone, and I said, the truck's telling me it's a low tire code, and it's one, the code is 1402. Let's say that's what it was. And I said, okay. So he calls me back. He goes, I've looked, and I've looked, and I've looked, and I don't remember that. I can't find the code. And I said, never mind. It just turned to 1403. It was the odometer. But anyway, he didn't make fun of me about that. Anyway, Eddie, thank you. You always kept all our equipment in great shape. Appreciate your service.
You missed a good opportunity. I'd have had to make fun of him over that. So next, I'd like to call the senior pastor for New Direction Ministry to the podium, Reverend Dr. Patricia Hauser. Good evening, Dr. Hauser.
Good evening.
I have a proclamation here in honor of Juneteenth, and it reads, "Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Juneteenth National Independence Day, represents a very important milestone in American history, when our nation fulfilled its creed of being the land of the free." During the American Civil War, the Honorable Abraham Lincoln, 16th President of the United States of America, issued the Emancipation Proclamation on September 22, 1862, with an effective date of January 1, 1863. On June 19, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, with news that the Civil War had ended and the slaves were free. This event has come to be known as Juneteenth, which is a linguistic blend of the words "June" and "19th," and was adopted to commemorate this historical and pivotal date in American history. Now, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth National Independence Day. So, Dr. Hauser, would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. First, I would like to say thank you to each and every one of you here tonight, and also to the chief of Temple Terrace. I'm deeply honored and humbled to be a part of this proclamation and recognition of Juneteenth National Independence Day. And I'm always reminded that no one has to be nice. No one has to remember you. And I want to say that this award holds a special place in my heart as it represents the resilience and the triumph of the African-American community in overcoming the freedom and equality that we still fight for today. And I want to say thank you for recognizing and paying this tribute to those who have fought tirelessly, for those that were our forefathers who did not get a chance to see this day in this time come to fruition. And Juneteenth is not just a celebration of the past, but a reminder of the ongoing struggle of racial equality and social justice. And as an advocate myself for equality, I'm committed to using my voice continuously as a resource to elevate voices of the voiceless and those that are marginalized, to work towards a better and more inclusive world of everyone. So thank you again for this incredible award.
us tonight. We have a proclamation in honor of, in recognition of Pride Month, and I appreciate you being here to receive this for us. It says, "Whereas the City of Temple Terrace observes Pride Month to honor the history and support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. All peoples, regardless of age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges, have the right to be treated based on their intrinsic value as human beings. The City of Temple Terrace accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. Temple Terrace will continue to be a city where all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, expression, are treated with dignity and respect. Temple Terrace does hereby recognize and salute that diversity and welcomes and embraces the inclusion of all members of the community as part of what makes Temple Terrace an amazing community." So now, therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as Pride Month. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you. And I promise I'll be succinct. I'm a very brief person. But I'd like to thank Mayor Ross and the rest of the city council for recognizing June as Pride Month. And in particular, I'd like to recognize the Temple Terrace Family Recreation Center for not only making a healthy lifestyle something very accessible to its members, but for always fostering an environment of inclusion and diversity. Its staff are great, and I owe them so much for how much they've contributed to my life and how much they've contributed to the LGBT community. It truly is an honor to be standing here and representing them. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you. So, we're not going to do a proclamation for this, but I do think it's in order to recognize Carl Langfeld's birthday today. So while we're in a celebratory mood, I just thought we would pass that along. I don't think we have any special ice cream for you, but thanks for being here on your birthday, and we appreciate all you and your staff do. So, all right. Presentations. We don't have any presentations on the agenda. However, there is something I'd like to share with you, and those of you who have gotten your proclamations, I promise you, after this, I'll give you a break and you can flood out. But if you have a few minutes, I'd like to share something with you. This is a city, kind of an introduction video or a marketing video that's been created by our communications staff, Lori Hayes and her staff. This is about five minutes, and it seems like it's so simple, but this took weeks of filming. I don't know how they ever make movies because to make a five-minute video took us forever. So if you would, Brian, could you please play the video for us?
Hello, everybody. I'm Temple Terrace Mayor Andy Ross. Welcome to our amazing city.
We can't hear it.
I'd like to share with you a few things that I think make our community a really terrific place. Temple Terrace was incorporated in 1925, and at that time was home to the Temple Orange Groves. In fact, we had the largest citrus grove in the entire world. Today, we are a flourishing city of about 27,000 people, and we continue to grow in population, diversity, and commerce. Built on the banks of the Hillsborough River, Temple Terrace offers beautiful views of Florida's nature and wildlife. We're also very proud of our lush tree canopy, which we affectionately call our urban forest. Temple Terrace is designated as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation and has been for well over a decade. Our city is one of the first designed around a golf course rather than the other way around. Our historic golf course was built in 1922, or three years before the city was established. The course was designed by famous golf course architect Tom Bendalo and is the only 18-hole golf course in the state of Florida listed on the National Registry of Historic Places. As you travel around Temple Terrace, you'll notice golf carts not only on the course, but on our city streets as well. Our city was the first city in Florida designated as a multimodal transportation district, which reflects our commitment to providing mobility alternatives to automobiles. That commitment is alive today in our continued efforts to improve infrastructure for pedestrian activity and bicyclists throughout the city. Our city is proud to provide the highest level of city services to its residents. We have our own sanitation department, and all of our solid waste goes to the waste-to-energy incinerator rather than the landfills or is recycled. We also have our own police and fire departments, both of which are nationally accredited, and we're very proud that our fire department is internationally accredited to the highest standard achievable by any fire department in the world. Temple Terrace offers a wide range of amenities. We have our own city public library, which is affiliated with the Hillsborough County Public Library Cooperative. We have the Lake Foot Senior Center, which provides a host of services and programs for our senior community. We're extremely proud of our family recreation complex, which boasts a state-of-the-art fitness center, an aquatic center with five swimming pools and a water slide. We have clay court tennis complex. We have pickleball courts. We have gymnasiums and many, many more things at the family recreational complex. I invite everybody to come and visit. It's a remarkable facility. Temple Terrace offers many community events throughout the year to bring our residents together and help to foster that sense of community for which we're so famous. Perhaps the most widely known of these events is our Independence Day Parade, which is one of the best in the Tampa Bay area. After the parade later that day, we gather on the golf course, and we have a tremendous fireworks display. Thousands of people come out. We have live music. We have food vendors. We have games and activities for children and families. It's a terrific event, and I invite all of you to come see. It's really amazing. We also have a fall festival, winter wonderland, the Arts Festival, the Craft Beer Festival, a chalk art festival, and the list goes on and on and on. Temple Terrace really offers it all. Temple Terrace is a rising star in economic opportunity and commercial development. Our downtown redevelopment project is well underway and is quickly becoming a hub of upscale living, dining, and shopping. We're currently working on a pedestrian master plan, which will offer even more green space and activities for visitors and tie the projects together to really create a sense of place in the downtown, which is what we're trying to do. Florida College is perhaps our most historic and valued community partner. Their history and the history of the city are organically entwined, and they are an integral part of the fabric of our city. Our closeness to USF is both geographical and relational. The faculty and staff who live here are a tremendous asset to the city through their volunteerism and their expertise in such a wide variety of issues. We're literally minutes away from Busch Gardens, USF, and the Museum of Science and Industry. A few minutes beyond that is Tampa Zoo at Lowry Park, Ebor City, downtown Tampa, the cruise terminals, or the best airport in the world. And then in an hour or less, one can be at Disney World or sitting on one of the best beaches in the country. Plans are already underway in Temple Terrace for our centennial celebration in 2025. A committee of staff and citizen volunteers is already working to lay out special events throughout the year to ensure that it's a full year of festivities. Temple Terrace is working very hard to ensure that our second hundred years is even more amazing than our first. Please follow us on social media or on our website at templeterrace.gov for all the latest news.
So thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Lori, Nathan, would you like, yes? Now, we're going to try some technical wizardry here, so bear with us as Brian shifts these cameras around, because I really would like Brian Hill to be able to join us for this. So he has to fix the camera so that he can step out of the control booth here. So, ladies and gentlemen, this is the staff that put this together. And as you know, I think most of us know Lori Hayes as our marketing officer. Brian Hill is perhaps a little less known by the public because he's typically in, there's Brian. He's typically in the booth, so not many of us get to see him. Brian was really the heartbeat of this video. Of course, there was a lot of work for all of them, but Brian's specialty is to put this all together. And I will tell you, we probably shot, I don't know, 100 hours of footage to get five minutes. Of course, they didn't have much to work with, with me. But so Brian was a contractor that used to just come in on our meetings and run the equipment, but then he decided to come into the Temple Terrace family as a regular employee now. So this is an example of the kinds of work that we can now do, having the staff on board that we didn't use to have. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you. I know this was a real pain in the neck for all of you, and working with me was not easy. It seems as soon as you turn the camera on, I can't say a sentence without goofing it up. But, and I'd like to encourage my colleagues up here, of course, you don't have to. It's up to each of you. But I'd like to encourage you to not necessarily make a five-minute video. That takes a lot of time, but to work with them, to do little soundbites, maybe introduce some of the videos that they make. And the reason that I really would encourage that, it's not so much that I'm trying to make us movie stars. I don't think that's going to happen. But I think it's good for the residents to see how hard their council members are working. And there's very little opportunity unless you come to a council meeting for people to really hear the things that you're engaged in and involved in. So if you have a little bit of time to just chat with them on camera about the Hart Board or the school committee or the or the school committee, or the river issues, or the many things that you're involved in, vice versa, I would really appreciate that. So, you don't have to, but if they call you and invite you, it's because I'm nagging them to do that. And so, if you have a minute to get with them, they're really good to work with. They're not scary. If they can make me make a video, you can do it, I'm sure. So, thank you, Lori, Brian, Nathan, for all your work on this. Would you like to say a few words?
I'm thrilled to have Brian on the team and, you know, our small but mighty team here, and we are looking forward to doing a lot more videos. It's the one communication avenue that was kind of lacking, I mean, during my past six years here, and to be able to do this and do it at the level of that video, I mean, I'm really excited about that. So, I'm grateful that Brian is here and, you know, having Nathan, you know, who adds a lot to the team as well. So, we're looking forward to big things.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate that. Let's give him another round of applause. Very good. Okay, I promise that's it. So, next item of business is a police pension board ratification. In accordance with the city codes of ordinances, five members serve on the police pension board of trustees... Oh, yes. You may all leave. You're welcome to stay. We're happy to have you, but thank you all for being here. I promised I'd dismiss you, and I didn't do it. Thanks for being here. In accordance with the city code of ordinances, five members serve on the police pension board of trustees. Two members are city representatives. Two members are elected by the city of Temple Terrace police officers, and two members and one resident is elected by the board. At the meeting of May 11th, quarterly pension board meeting, the board voted and reappointed Thomas Zerilla to serve in the fifth trustee seat for a term from February 1st, 23, till February 1st of 25. This appointment should be confirmed by city council. Is there a motion to confirm the appointment?
Move to approve to confirm the appointment of Thomas Zerilla. Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. Mr. Zerilla, thank you for your service. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from our May 16 city council meeting? Captain, could you ask them to... Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes from May 16th, 2023.
Second.
Motion is second. Any adjustments, corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Minutes are adopted. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. We do have a three-minute time limit imposed on all comments from the public, and we do ask that speakers come to the podium and state their name and city of residence. During public comment, we do like to provide assurance to the public that your concerns are taken seriously, and our staff does follow up on these and will circle back to you. So, are there members of the public? I currently don't have any requests to speak. Next is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve as presented. Second.
All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. Consent agenda is adopted. Next is the first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance adopting the rezoning of folio 036917-0000 and addressed as 11714 North 58th Street and folio 036908-0000, addressed as 11801 North 56th Street. I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who's going to speak on this matter to stand for the oath administered by the city clerk.
Do you sweetie tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, though?
Very good. City attorney, would you please make a poll for ex parte communication?
If any council member has received an ex parte communication, either written or oral from anyone with regard to this item, please state what that is. If it has been in writing, then a copy of that needs to be provided to the clerk for the record, and if it's been either written or oral, please state at this time with whom that communication occurred, what the sum and substance of it was, and when that took place, and starting with councilperson Fernandez.
I don't have any.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
Thank you.
Good, very good. Our community development director, Mike Sherman, is here to explain. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for tonight, and it's the first public hearing and reading of an ordinance for rezoning petition 2202, and this is a request to rezone approximately 3.54 acres located at 11714 North 58th Street and 11801 North 56th Street, from the RMC 20, which is the Hillsborough County zoning district, and CG Commercial General, which is a Temple Terrace zoning district, to the PD zoning district. There are two parcels involved. One has a folio number of 036917-0000 and 36908-000. The owner is Falla Ventures Associate, excuse me, Falla Ventures LLC, and the applicant's representative is in the audience tonight. It's Todd Pressman of Pressman and Associates. There we go. So, I did this last time we had a PD rezoning, but I want to do this again for the people in the public who might be watching, and basically tell them what a PD zoning is. So, PD zoning districts are intended to encourage creative, innovative, and/or mixed-use development, and to ensure and promote land use compatibility in harmony for land that is to be planned and developed as a whole or in a single development operation, as a whole in a single development operation, or a programmed series of development phases. PD zoning requests often give and take, where the developer may be asking for waivers or deviations from the code, and the local government asks for additional site development requirements. This is an aerial of the site that we're considering tonight. As the council can see, there's two parcels. One fronts North 56th Street. The other fronts North 58th Street. The one on North 56th is a larger parcel, and that's where the former Golden Corral was, and the smaller parcel on 58th Street is, right now, is a single-family home there. This is a map of the property. Again, those are the two addresses. The current zoning is residential multifamily conventional, and that's RMC 20, and Commercial General or CG. The proposed zoning is PD, and it's about, again, 3.54 acres. This is some property information. I won't read all of those, but the proposed use of the property is to redevelop the former Golden Corral restaurant to include 11801 North 56th Street and 11714 North 58th Street. The parcels are to be combined through the PD zoning district, with 11801 North 56th Street being redeveloped into two restaurants and some commercial retail space, and 11714 North 58th Street will serve as additional parking, landscaping, buffering, and stormwater management to permit the expansion of both properties. No access will be permitted on the residential street, which is North 58th. This table shows the surrounding uses, existing uses, future land use and zoning. To the north, there's apartments on 58th, and on 56th Street, there's commercial. The future land use is residential 20 on 58th. The northern parcel, future land use on 56th Street is commercial C. The zoning is RMC 16 on 58th and CG on 56th Street. South, there's both commercial uses on 58th and 56th Street. It's, both have the commercial C category, and the zoning is for both parcels. To the south are commercial general. To the east on 58th Street, North 58th Street, there's single-family. It has a residential 20, future land use map category, and also the zoning is RMC 16 on 56th and 58th. To the west of the property is commercial on 58th and 56th. The future land use map category is commercial C, and both parcels have a CG zoning classification. Here's some pictures of the site from the North 56th property. The one on the left is a view from 56th Street looking at the Golden Corral. The picture to the right is the view from North 56th Street across the street. The next one is looking north on 56th Street. The other parcels on the bottom two show onsite parking, and then looking south on North 56th Street. Because there's two properties, I wanted to get some pictures of the property on North 58th. The first one is looking south on North 58th Street. The west is a subject property. The east is a single-family home, and to the north are apartments. Okay, so, one thing that's unique about or with PD zoning districts is they come with a master concept plan. So, this is the master concept plan for the parcels. You'll see that they're tied together through this plan. The proposed development will be two restaurants. One's about 8,000 square feet with about 2,000 square foot of retail. The second restaurant on the property is about 15,000 square feet. It's two stories. There's about 182 parking spaces, and the smaller parcel that fronts North 58th will be used for stormwater management, landscaping, buffers to the residential uses as well, and access will be limited to the property from North 56th Street. And that way, we can keep commercial traffic off the residential street. Previous actions that have taken place with this property for the rezoning. The Development Review Committee looked at this. We recommended approval. We had no objections, and on May 25th of this year, the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission staff reviewed the zoning reclassification request and recommended approval for that as well, finding that it's consistent and complies with the long-term planning goals and the comprehensive plan. So, our recommendation is for approval on first reading of the ordinance, and there's a few conditions. The first condition is that the PD will allow for uses in the commercial C future land use map district, which includes restaurant and retail uses, and construction shall take place in accordance with the criteria and requirements of the Temple Terrace Land Development Code unless specifically outlined within these conditions. The second condition is access to the development shall be from North 56th Street. No access shall be permitted on North 58th. Condition three, stormwater management design must meet the requirements of the Temple Terrace Land Development Code and the Southwest Florida Water Management District rules at the time of permitting, and where standards are not specified herein, the Temple Terrace Land Development Code standards or current edition will apply. I'm available to answer any questions that the board may have or the council may have tonight, and Mr. Pressman may want to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Mr. Pressman?
Good evening, sir. Welcome back.
Thank you. It's becoming a habit, a good habit. Todd Pressman, for the record, 202nd Avenue South, number 451 in St. Petersburg, Florida. I did have a PowerPoint, but quite frankly, what you've seen before you was very well covered, and I'd just be repeating it. We've received a number of approvals already, as you're aware. You've already made some approvals on this, and the property owner is looking forward to being a part of Temple Terrace and making the property once again viable and active and bringing in a very desired and what we expect and will look at as being a very successful commercial use. So, with that, we'll be happy to answer the questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Pressman. We'll ask for public comment first, but we may have some questions afterwards. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Okay, council members, are there questions?
I have one.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. You said access is not permitted from 58th Street. Does that go with the property regardless of the owner?
Yes, sir. This PD zoning ordinance runs with the land until, unless it's changed at a later date.
Okay, thank you. That's all I want to know.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I guess mine is similar. So, if the owner were to sell the parcels in the future, would they now, with this zoning and with the changes that we're making, have to be sold together as a unit, or would they be able to sell them separately?
They would have to be sold as a unit, and they're going to be tied together not only by the master plan, but also by one folio ID.
Councilmembers? Good. If there are no further questions, any other comments, Mr. Pressman?
Okay.
Okay, very good. Then I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
In ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning 3.54 plus minus acres of real property, addressed as 11714 North 58th Street with a folio number of 036917-0000 from zoning classification residential multifamily conventional 20 Hillsborough County and 11801 North 56th Street with a folio number of 036908000 from zoning classification of Commercial General, city of Temple Terrace to plan development city of Temple Terrace for RZP 22-02, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion?
Move to approve on first reading ordinance 1548, adopt the rezoning of the folios as listed.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays. Thank you, Mr. Pressman. The ordinance is adopted on first reading and will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. Thank you.
That's correct, and so, all three land use actions will be that night, as directed by the council. Anexation, comp plan amendment, and the rezoning.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Next item is the resolution approving a CDBG interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County. To decode that, that's Community Development Block Grant, and our Assistant Finance Director Jennifer Newman is here to explain. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To retain access to the city sheriff Community Development Block Grant Program funds, an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County is provided for council approval, excuse me. In anticipation of a deadline extension, the county decided to merge the fiscal year 22 interlocal agreement with the fiscal year 2023 interlocal agreement. Projects that were already approved in the resolution 45-23 and 46-23 for the fiscal 22 interlocal agreement are incorporated into the fiscal 23 interlocal agreement. The agreement shall commence upon execution by both parties and shall remain in full force and effect until October 31st, 2024, with expenses completed by the city by July 31st, 2024. Any funds not expended under this agreement must be returned to the county to be reprogrammed into this county's CDBG budget. Grant funds to be provided under this agreement shall be used by the subrecipient, the city of Temple Terrace, to provide a suitable living environment to benefit low and moderate-income persons within the areas depicted in Exhibit D of the attached agreement. The following eligible areas, infrastructure, I'm sorry. The following eligible infrastructure activities will be completed as CDBG funds are available, with other funds utilized to complete the scope of work if applicable. Sidewalk repair on White Way and 53rd between City Limits and North 56th Street, which was approved under resolutions 4523 and 4623. Resurfacing North 52nd Street from Mission Hills to University Square Drive, construction of a new sidewalk at East 113th Avenue between North 53rd and North 56th Street, as well as North 54th Street from East Serena Drive to Dead End, replacing aging water mains and service laterals on North 53rd Street between Mission Hills Avenue and East 98th Street. Repair on Mission Hills and North 52nd Street between City Limits and North 56th Street, resurfacing a lane drive from North 52nd Street and Overlook Drive, and then bicycle pavement markings on Serena Drive between the City Limits and North 56th Street. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between Hillsborough County and the city of Temple Terrace to fund street improvements under the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG program in the amount of $502,781. And I would be happy to answer any questions, but if you have technical questions, I believe Brian snuck in, and he would be the Brian snuck in, and he would be the person you would need to ask.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Newman. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Schisler?
Yeah, I have two questions. And you may have answered the one already. You've made, your tenure isn't long enough to go through this, but Jim, all of the CDGB grant issues that we've had over the last few years, we've had to come back and amend previous, are all those caught up now and rolled up into this one?
Well, this one only is two years.
Just two years.
And the rest are, I believe, completed. Are they done?
Okay, all right. Okay. All right. And the second question is, with all that list of items, is 502,000 enough?
That is a good question.
I understand. I had to get him up here. I had to bring Brian into it. Yeah, water mains and everything else, that's.
So we kind of planned it to where we'll have more projects than probably what we have money, just to try to knock off the ones that we can. So more than likely, we'll try to roll over any projects that we don't complete into another fiscal year with the CDBG agreements.
Okay, so there'll be future monies coming down the pipe?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I don't want to promise something or make an inference that we're going to be doing X, Y, and Z, and whoops, sorry, we ran out of money, you know. So, okay, all right, good. Thank you.
The project list is always longer than the funding. By design.
By design.
Other questions, councilmembers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Fernandez?
So who is actually going to be performing the work? Is this something that our city staff will be doing for the projects that we will be taking on under this funding, or will we be subcontracting this out?
Well, part of the resolutions that we're rolling into this agreement, the 4523 and the 4623, were contracts with vendors to do some of the work. There is an expectation that we will go out for contract for most of the work. If we're able to, we might try to do some of the engineering in-house, but I believe we've also budgeted, if necessary, that that would have to be contracted out as well. And Brian, if you have anything else to say on that, or that's, okay.
Okay, so we know that the list of work that we want to perform is going to, the cost is going to exceed the 502,000 funding. Is there a plan besides the, a future year grant fund cycle to, something like a water main, you can't necessarily put off until, oh, there's funding, we can do this now. I mean, sometimes it has to be done. Do we have some sort of secondary or backup funding plan for work that really has to be done in case the funding doesn't come through in a future budget year from the county?
I do know that we have to continue these agreements in order, and have to complete the work in order to continue to get new grant awards. As far as funding from other sources, that is not a question I can answer right at this second, as to how much we would have available in other funds. If there is something that has to be done, I'm sure that we can work in the finance department and with the city manager and with council to find the funds, to get something that has to be done immediately, completed.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay. Very good. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution approving CDGB interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? I do have one quick thing for city manager Troy, I'm not sure who, Ray, whoever's doing what. I've had several conversations, I'm not suggesting that we change the projects list that we've already have identified, because I know we have a list. The list is always longer than the funding in order to show need, so it's supposed to be that way. However, I've had several conversations recently with the city of Tampa about this, because one of their CDBG areas is right across the imaginary city line. And so they spend their CDBG money on their side of, literally, we're sometimes right across the street. And so I've talked to them about the possibility of exploring some collaboration. Most of our money, we spend on repaving and sidewalks, which are obviously important, depending on what street it is, but we do a lot of sidewalks with this money. I've talked to them about perhaps collaborating and doing something that might have a bigger impact on that neighborhood by pooling some of our money and doing a joint project and maybe doing something that's a real game changer for that area as opposed to just a sidewalk enhancement. So as we're working our way down this list and replenishing future projects on the bottom of it, I'd like to propose that there's, that we maybe engage in some conversations with Tampa to see if there's a way to leverage their money and our money and maybe do something more impactful. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, very good. Any other comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No nays? Good. Resolution is adopted. Thank you very much. Next item is a resolution approving the appropriation of funding for the Police Department Engagement Center and the Permitting Center project in City Hall. And then the city manager will now explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So this is an item that we've been working on now for several months, and I want to commend the police, fire, and community development departments particularly. As you know, we've been trying to address multiple issues into how our city hall flows and how we have a welcoming atmosphere for the public. One of the challenges that we've talked about at length is when the public comes in to interact with our police officers. That setting right now is not particularly conducive to that. People basically are outside the main doors or inside the hallway discussing issues that really shouldn't be in the public domain. We also have, we're making changes, as you know, outside improvements to the facilities. And one of the things that we've also encountered is people coming in for permits and sort of lining up right at the main door and blocking access to the main entrance to City Hall. So thanks to the cooperation of the departments I mentioned earlier, we've come up with a plan that will provide for what we're calling the Police Department's Community Engagement Center, which will basically be a conference room, if you will, right at the entrance to City Hall in the area that today is our permitting office on the first floor. That will be available, will be a soundproof room, provide privacy for the public and our police officers to engage with the public. In addition, we are going to address the, what's happened with the security layout of our building is that we created a schism in community development, so we have some of our permitting staff on the first floor, but then we have the inspection staff upstairs, the building official and the building inspector, and also our city arborist. So by making these changes, we're able to bring those folks downstairs to where the public is. And we're also going to bring our new planner downstairs as well, because that position will be engaging with some of the permit questions that the public might have. So we're calling it, for lack of a better term, we're going to call it a permitting one-stop center. It's, I don't want to give anybody the misimpression that that's one stop and it's everything you need, but sort of along that path, if you will. And to do all these changes, we will have to relocate the fire department's risk reduction staff, so they'll be moved upstairs to where community development is today. But everybody's worked very collegially to make that happen. What we're asking for this evening is the use of community investment tax fund dollars to the, a maximum of $20,000 to allow us to do this work. Most of the work will be done in-house by our facility staff, so the bulk of the costs will be associated with materials, drywall, studs, things like that. But there will be some work that we'll have to contract out, electrical work, also the electronic locks and the wiring and security cameras, et cetera, that will be contracted out also as part of that $20,000. Happy to take any questions.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Bia. Councilmembers, questions? I have one. Well, I know we've been through several iterations of this project, so at this point, is there going to be an additional exterior door to the building? Is that still part of the?
No, that was, that was a good question. That was an earlier version with, thanks to the creativity of the team, particularly, I want to recognize Dallas Foster Building Official. They came up with a solution that wouldn't require us to make that sort of more dramatic change, so the facade of the building will look the same. It's when you come in, basically, you'll be over to the left, there'll be a new door where the permitting window is today, and that's where the police department's facility will be.
Okay. And then the building folks will be behind that?
Exactly. They'll be sort of to the side and behind, sort of. The hallway will wrap around the police department room.
Okay. Questions, councilmember? Councilmember Fernandez?
Regarding the design of, has the police department, I'm guessing that you've worked with them and that they find this design adequate and it'll meet the needs that they've been looking?
Yes. Yes, we've consulted with all the three departments that are impacted, and everybody's on board with the changes.
Okay.
Good. I skipped a step. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Okay, very good. If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve the appropriation of funding for the Police Department Engagement Center.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Bia. Next item is a resolution approving a budget adjustment for City Hall building improvements and upgrades. Finance Director Jim Ingram is here to explain.
Good evening, Mayor Ross, City Council. We do have a resolution approving a budget adjustment for City Hall building improvements and upgrades. City Hall, well, on 12/27/22, the city received $6,294 from the State of Florida's Office of Attorney General as the city's share of settlements arising from price fixing claims against multiple manufacturers of automotive parts. No restriction for use of these funds was stated in the communication to the city. These funds were deposited in GL account 00100036930, which is general fund, by the way, for miscellaneous revenues and settlements. No revenues were included in the adopted fiscal year 2022-23 budget for this account. Matching expenditures of $6,294 will be used for City Hall building improvements and upgrades from GL account 00117195196241. That is our Public Works Facility account for building improvements. And it is a capital account. This resolution will adjust both the revenue and the expenditure account by adding $6,294, both on the revenue and on the expense side. And staff recommends that city council approve adding the $6,294 of revenue with the matching expenditures to the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. And I stand for, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? If not, councilmembers, questions?
Well, I have a question.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Is this something, a situation where our hope in the remodel project exceeded our funding, so this will help offset and be utilized? Or would this funding be needed somewhere else?
Several months ago, we discussed this about how we could use more money that was not originally budgeted for the city hall upgrades and improvements. And when this money came in December, it was stated, I believe from council, that it would be nice to use that money, if we can, for additional funding for upgrades.
City manager?
And just to add to that, so the dollars are definitely needed for the first project if we want to finish it. There are certain things, as you can tell, we've put down the tile, we're almost done with that, that part of the project. The next element would be the ceiling, the ceiling squares, which are stained and old, and we'd like to change those out. These dollars would go a long way to doing that.
Other questions? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve the budget adjustment as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Council business, we have one, well, we have one on the agenda, carryover council item, and that is reconsideration of resolution 47-23 awarding grant funds to PISO and Temple Terrace Elementary Schools. City attorney will explain.
I'm going to try to explain, although it's possible that Councilman Schisler might be able to explain a little bit better, and I'm hoping that he'll add to this. A few meetings ago, there was a recommendation from the School Support Committee to give a grant for special projects. There was apparently grant money that was left over after the regular grant applications had been submitted and made to council and approved through, earlier in the school year. At the time, there were two schools that submitted applications, they were approved by council, and the amounts were, requested were for more than $1,000, but finally council then approved $1,000, I believe each, for these schools, because under the rules of procedure that the School Support Committee has, there's a limitation for grants at $1,000 each. After that approval was made, information came forward, and I believe that Councilman Schisler has something to contribute to this that was related to possibly giving more. In reviewing the procedural rules, it seems that where it currently stands is, is that council is limited to that $1,000 award. My recommendation is that there are basically two choices and three ways to go in this. If council wishes to award more, then council would need to make that resolution, make a motion, they can do it by resolution, and do that first, and raise the amount that can be awarded for a grant. I believe that the School Support Committee is recommending an increase to the grant funding limit, and they've got their number in their mind, and that could be approved by council if it chooses to do so. Council also has the option of not accepting that amount and approving less, or approving even more. Once that is done, council can then go back and consider the request that is being made by the schools for more than $1,000 and approve those requests. But you're going to have, if you want to approve the schools getting more than $1,000, you're going to have to take the step first to increase the limit. And that would then change the rules of procedure for the School Support Committee going forward. You can designate regular grants for, the list that you generally get each year, you can designate that as a certain amount. It could stay at $1,000, it could be more. And you can also designate that there be a special grants awarded at the end of the school year, should there be surplus amounts available. Sometimes there are, sometimes there may not be. So you could either parse it out that way or just make them all the same. All grants would be the same regardless of whether they're during the school year or they're at the end of the school year. I know we're kind of calling them special projects or special grants, and you can continue to designate them as that if you want to. So those are your options, but again, if you want to give these two schools more money, you're going to have to raise the limit.
Thank you, councilmember.
If I may, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schoen. Again, the School Support Committee followed a procedure earlier, earlier in the fiscal year whereby they solicited for grants throughout the whole, throughout all our schools of influence. And when the grant process was completed, they had expended $14,000, I can't remember the exact number, but some, some number of dollars. And the grants that were submitted were, were taken care of. Subsequent to that, in Subsequent to that, in one of my last meetings with them as, as the liaison, I challenged them to go find special projects, and which they did. And unfortunately, through my error, I didn't bring that forward to council when the issue came up, so we could have addressed this at the time. When Ms. Paul made the, made the pitch, if you will, for the awarding of the special projects, it was not done as, as we had envisioned, and it wasn't, I didn't notice it till, I didn't catch it till after it was, it was already done. I would like to propose that we take the tact with the School Support Committee, maintaining the existing grants process, okay? And then, if there's monies available, a special project. Because a special project was designed to go out and say, it's just not going to help Mrs. Smith's class, it's going to generate the, the opportunity to bring a whole grade level up, or to, to, to cross-pollinate with other schools. And the two projects that they did bring, I believe, will, will go a long ways to doing that. So, I mean, I don't know if it's appropriate at this point, but I would like to make a motion, unless there's other discussion, to, to accomplish that, to maintain the current $1,000 limit on the grant program, and then maybe a $2,000 limit on, on special projects, if, if council would feel better with a number attached to it. But the special projects would be available to the schools, provided there's funds available at the end of the grant program. And I'll leave it there. That, that would be my motion, that'd be what I would envision this moving forward with, for the School Support Committee, with, with guidance for them.
Okay, so before, I need to know whether that's a motion, or whether that's a theoretical motion?
That's a motion, that's a motion.
Okay, so can you concisely state the motion for the records of the?
Okay. Maintain $1,000 limit for the grant program, and a $2,000 limit for special project programs, provided there's funds available.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, second for discussion, and I believe you're up.
Yes. So, at the behest of council, after our previous discussion about this, the School Support Committee, Monday before last, discussed this topic, and council asked us to consider what it would be to, to raise the grant threshold. And the last time, excuse me, the, the $1,000 limit was determined back in 2006, and the committee typed into their phones, like, what, what was the inflation rate since 2006, and what's the grant now? And, and it would be $1,500 and 2 cents, or something like that.
I did the same thing.
You did? So, the, the committee proposed to increase the grant limit to $1,500, and it might mean fewer grants, but oftentimes, people don't ask for that much. People usually ask for something in the, you know, lower, lower, less than $1,000 range. So they did bring that to the table, and it, it does go along with, you know, you know, what it was back then. And in your motion, you suggested keeping it at the $1,000 level, and, and, I mean, this is another possibility where it could be increased according to what they asked for.
Friendly amendment, that's fine.
I'm not, I'm not sure, maybe. And I do like the idea about having a, a special project threshold for, for money left over at the end of the year, but I do have a question. And I kind of got the feeling in the beginning, when this was first explained to me, that this was sort of like a, a one-off thing, like, maybe this is just a one-time thing, but it sounds like you have the idea of, of it being sort of a consistent thing, maybe at the end of their cycle, this type of grant is sort of special, like it's, it's for the principals rather than the teachers to apply for.
Well, yeah, whoever, whoever, it's, it's, every year, new things are developed, new ideas, new concepts. We didn't think about it this year, but next year, it's, it's something that's available. And I think that it's, it's, it's incumbent upon us to, to grad, you know, to look for special issues and special projects that would benefit all the schools.
Okay. There isn't really an application process or an application cycle that goes along with that, though.
Correct.
And I, I don't know, this is probably a legal question, what changes we might have to make in order to have something like that added to our program.
I would have to review the, the procedure.
Microphone.
Have to review the Support Committee's rules of procedure first. I had started looking at them just in getting ready for this, and they do need some going over, just grammatically and punctuation and, and clarification. So, this, this is a good time to, to fully discuss this, so that we can make all those changes at the same time. It really, this, City Council is approving the money and funding this from the city, so it's up to you all to determine what you want to do and how you want to proceed with giving this money out. So, I mean, legally, I, you know, you're not, you're not really restricted, you know, unless you go wild from this program, but, you know, within the confines of the way the program is now, you've got some things that you can do, that you can add now.
Okay. In, in that case, I'd like to amend the motion to go along with what the School Support Committee recommended, which was $1,500 for the regular school year grant, and let's keep the provision for the, the special one at the end. Yeah, that's, that's the change that I'll suggest.
I'll amend it.
Okay. Councilmember, discussion. Vice Mayor.
Yes, and I can support the $1,500. A question on the special projects, you alluded to, if there was money at the end of the year for these special projects, is that the only way a special project would happen, is if there's money left over? I would think special projects would be a special project and good anytime, and then we'd have to develop, someone would have to develop guidelines, what's a special project? So someone says, well, gee, I want $1,600, so I'm going to go for a special project.
Typically during the normal grant cycle, the, the requesters understand that it's, the limit's the limit, and they get cut back, they get cut back. So, I, I, I don't know how to answer your question, I, I'm, I'm a little, a little, the special project would have to demonstrate a more universal benefit to, to, to more people, to more students, I would think. This would be something that, this is all relatively new, so we'd have to, the School Support Committee would have to develop their rules to, to dealing with that.
I, I have a possible solution to that, but I don't have the floor yet, so.
So, in, with the discussion, if whatever we do tonight, how does that help PISO and Temple Terrace now?
Well, the first step is, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
The first step would be to change the rules, and the second step would be to reconsider.
If we have to go back and ask the School Support Committee to develop a set of special projects for our motion, do we have to do that? Will they not get that?
I have a.
Okay, I will, I will stop.
Yeah. Councilmember Fernandez.
So, I, I have a couple of questions. One is, if, I really would like to hear from the School Support Committee about their thoughts on the $1,000 grant limit versus the $1,500 grant limit. Are they getting a lot of grant requests that come in at $1,000, or that are coming in, that they're getting the feedback that, I really wish we could ask for more, but your limit is $1,000? So I'd really like to have that kind of feedback before we talk about just arbitrarily raising the, the grant limit. Second, I'm, when I was the School Support Committee liaison, and actually on the School Support Committee after I came off council the first time, we looked at every grant for their impact to the student body, and anytime that impact was across more than one classroom or impacted, that was one of the requirements, was to talk about how many students they were going to impact, and anytime they impacted a, a greater number of students, the likelihood of that grant being awarded was higher. So, that's, that factor is already considered, and I'm concerned about how we would describe a special project. I'm not necessarily, I'm not opposed to increasing the grant limit, I'm not opposed to having a provision for a special project and having the rules, I just would much rather have a conversation more collaboratively with the School Support Committee, since they're the ones that have been reading the grants, interacting with the schools and the teachers, and would probably have, to me, it, it would be information that I would like to have before I decide on something like this.
Well, I believe to the threshold, we've already heard from the liaison as to what she, what they wanted, or what they were requesting.
But, yes, however, I have, I'm not in a position where I can ask them my questions right at this moment. I, the, the, that calculation is strictly based on, well, if we look at inflation, $1,000 at that time would now be $1,500 now. That doesn't mean that the feedback from teachers is, is, oh, we wish we had the opportunity to be $1,500. That doesn't tell me that, well, most of the grants are really coming in at just under $1,000, so we wouldn't really be served raising the general grant rate to $1,500. If we're able to provide most of the grants that are requested, that's, I, I, I'm not able to ask that question. I'm not able to, to question that process, and I'm not comfortable just arbitrarily putting an amount out there, because frankly, to me, if, if a lot of our grants are coming in, the requests are, let's say, 900 to 1,000, we are able to give more grants if we limit ourselves to 1,000, but if there are, if there really are a lot of projects that would exceed that $1,000 that we're not able to provide the funding for, then that's a different story. And at this moment, right now, that's, those are not questions that I can have answered.
So, first of all, I'm, I'm in favor of this motion, if this is the way it goes, and I'm not sure we would get a lot of information, because nobody's applying for more than $1,000, because that's the cap. So, they're all going to be less than $1,000, because the rules don't permit anybody to apply for more than that. I'm with you on where you're trying to go, but I think we're making this far too complicated. I, I think there's a really simple way to do this. Up the amount that, that schools can apply for, and make special projects eligible. That's it. Now, what that figure is, whether it's $1,502, I punched the same thing in, whether it's $1,500, or you want to bump it up to even higher to allow, maybe, you know, we've been doing this for a long time, the same way. Maybe fewer projects that have a bigger impact on a struggling school is a better approach than, you know, it's still the same amount of money, but maybe giving more of a shot in the arm to a school that's struggling is better than giving somebody $500 to do something in one classroom. So, why don't we, instead of, and I don't, personally, I, I, no offense, I, I'm not crazy about the end-of-the-year stuff, because I've been a civil servant for a long time, I know how to play that end-of-the-year thing. And so when you build in something based on end-of-the-year, if there's funds available, you're creating an incentive, not, there's nobody's devious or anything like that, but you've created an opportunity to say, well, you know what, if we can play our cards right so that there's $8,000 left over, I know that there's a big project that could happen at this school. So, I just, I don't want to create that, and I agree with the Vice Mayor that special projects might happen anytime during the fiscal year. So I don't see any reason to limit that. So, why don't we just, if, my opinion, I'm not going to vote against your motion if you don't agree, but why don't we just up the amount, you pick a number, and make special projects eligible? That's it, that's all we have to do.
That's what I was trying to do, but that's, you said it better than I.
It's just simple, I mean, it's not.
And, and keep in mind, when I said end of, end, with the end of the, the end of the grant cycle, which is like October, so it's not end of the fiscal year, but it's, it's beginning of the school, essentially beginning of the school year. So when I, you know, just so that, there's no misinterpretation, after the grant cycle, which is, which ends September, October timeframe, then it would be the rest of the year. It would be, hopefully by the end of the calendar year, to, to, to take advantage of. But I have no problem with.
But I, I wouldn't even mind going to $2,000, because, and now we're not just keeping up with inflation, we're actually increasing it.
Yeah.
And say, okay, we know that this may result in fewer grants. It, it may be, maybe it won't, maybe the applications will still be for $800 projects, I don't know. But it gives the opportunity for somebody in a school that we, like Greco, we've really invested in Greco as a city, trying to help them turn that school around, and it gives them the ability to come to us and say, listen, this is something that we want to start, a new program or something, it's bigger than just one classroom, but this is a bigger investment, this is going to take a couple thousand dollars, do you have it? Well, I, I'd rather have the ability to do that, that's just, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, if you don't want $2,000, it's fine, but I would go higher even if it were me.
Trying to how to, how to reword the motion, then.
Why don't you withdraw and start over?
Okay, all right. Your second.
I recall my second.
Okay, withdraw the motion. I don't know, simplest way is just, just increase it to 2,000?
Two things, increase the amount, and then make special projects eligible.
Okay. Propose a motion to increase the amount to $2,000 as the limit, and then increase, and then, and add a special projects classification.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Councilmember Fernandez.
Okay, so, to me, the 2,000 makes more sense in that I still have an issue with not hearing back from the School Support Committee as to their rationale and their request, but 2,000 limit would make more sense. I don't think that we need a designation for special project. If the, if, the, the two projects that we've been requested to fund were both just under $2,000, I don't know that we need to create this whole apparatus to evaluate a special project separately from a grant.
I wasn't, that wasn't what I was.
But, I, so to me, I would prefer, if we're going to raise the grant limit, let's just stay within the, the parameters that we've already created for evaluating a grant, and say, okay, our, we've decided that a $2,000 grant limit gives the School Support Committee and the schools more options, and, because I'm concerned about trying to create the special project, and define it, and evaluate it.
I might, I think one of the issues that has arisen with, come on, it has arisen with this is that you're saying that the grant cycle basically ends in October, and there, under the procedures, there is a deadline for submitting these, date, time, also the spending of the money, you know, there's deadlines. This seemed to have arisen because there was money left over at the end, and so the invitation or the solicitation went out for additional grant requests, and I think that the invitation was made, so, in the solicitation, that it be something more, or incorporate more, or benefit more than the, the average requests that we're get, that we get during the, during the earlier part of the year. So, if you want to raise it to 2,000, that's great, and then if there could just be something said that now opens up a door if there's money left over, because right now, there's, there's nothing in the procedures that say, okay, we've got money left, and we can essentially start a new, or an additional grant solicitation. You know, instead of it being just ended in October, that's usually the end. This, you'd have to add something in here to say, if there's money left over, the door would be open again.
No.
So?
No.
Yes.
Okay.
Just let the, if there's money left over, it's treated like there's money left over, just like, we don't need to create a nightmare for finance so that this, this one fund carries over into a new, let's, don't do that. Just keep it simple. But I do have a question that Councilmember Fernandez raised, it's a good question. Do we really need? Do we really need the second part of this motion to add eligibility for special projects? Or would they already be eligible in the wording of our rules?
I mean, any project would be eligible because we don't know what a special project really is right now. It isn't defined, but what, if, if we don't say something about the end of the fiscal year or they're being left over, then basically PISO and Temple Terrace Elementary, they've missed the deadline and they need to just simply apply next year. If you're wanting to give them money now, there needs to be some, something addressing money at the end. I don't know if it's an end of a, a year or how you wanna designate the time limit, but the October grant cycle is over. And here they are suddenly in June wanting money. They need to wait till next, they need to wait till it's opened up to everybody again.
When does it close? We're still in the same fiscal year.
Well, it closed, I'm sorry, it would've closed in October so that the grants could all be processed, you know, evaluated and processed appropriately according to criteria, and then the funds be dispersed through finance.
So it, the.
They have an evaluation.
Application period closes in October?
It closes in September, I believe. September? August, August, the August, September timeframe, and then the, 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 the committee has an opportunity to do the evaluation in, on, on the dais, and then it brings it to council with, with the summaries.
But they submitted this application outside, after it?
After, yes, it was submitted afterwards. Due to the, you know, in, in, in conjunction with the challenge. Okay, we've done our grant progress, our, our grant process. Two years ago, grants went on forever. Every meeting was a discussion of another grant program. So, they, 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 they closed it off to being done at the beginning of the year because you can never get caught up from it.
So, we already awarded them a thousand dollars each?
It hasn't been dispersed.
Hasn't been dispersed.
But we already did that, just.
Yes.
Out of, after the closing of the period, we.
Yes.
So, we already did this?
Yes.
Okay. So, the horse is out of the barn already. It's just a matter, are we gonna give them a thousand dollars? Are we gonna give them?
Last year, we did three grant cycles, which was out of our normal practices anyway, too.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we've already.
Right, but that's why it's important that this be fixed. Not only do you want to give them more, which is outside the rules, you wanna give it to them now, which is outside the rules. We need to fix the rules if this is how you're wanting to dole out the money.
Well, no, we need to fix ourselves. We're the ones that gave them a thousand dollars after the window was closed. So, I don't know that we wanna change the rules. Leave the rules the way they are, and next time, we play by the rules.
Then you're limiting them to the thousand dollars.
Well, if we goofed up last month, what if we goof up this month, too?
Well, that's why I'm asking you to fix the rules so that you won't goof up in the future.
Yeah, I know, but I don't know that we wanna change the way the school support committee does grants just because of this one case. I, I'm not sure we wanna change our entire process just because of an anomaly.
This is, just seems to be properly addressing the, um, chance that there's going to be money left over at the end of the year. You can either not open up the door again.
Yeah, I don't.
And just let it, let it, I don't know where it goes. If it goes back into the general fund or if it stays and just increases the, the, the program's funds. Where does the money go when it's not spent?
It just, it goes back to the general fund.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Abel.
I know you were trying to make it simple, but I think that, um, I'm not sure, but I think the city attorney was, was saying something about the special project language being in there as something that allows us to work outside of the, the grant cycle. Having a special project means, okay, the grant cycle's over and now, you know, there's this money. And it, did I understand that correctly?
Right, and, and there may not be money at the end of a year, but this time there was. And so, the door was open for requests. We got requests. You all seem to want to give them some money. They asked for more than the thousand dollars, but you are limited. So, you're correct right now in the awarding of a thousand dollars. You're just not quite right in awarding it now. The money essentially goes back to the general fund and it really isn't there. So.
I give up. Councilmember Fernandez.
Well, I, this is my preference. I'm willing to raise the grant award limit to two thousand dollars, and that can apply to any grant that they write for any project to submit in the grant cycle that, to meet the deadline. And I do not wanna have, I do not wanna come back after the grant cycle if there's still money left. It, it is what it is. The, the grants get in. If we raise the limit to two thousand dollars, that encompasses many different projects and that should cover. And I would really not want to change the process. So, I am not in favor of opening it up a, after the end of the grant deadline.
I, I have to agree with Councilmember Fernandez on this one. I, I don't think we need to change our whole procedures just because of this anomaly that we have with this particular one issue. I don't think that's a good idea. I'm fine with raising the limit. I'm fine with special projects being eligible, although it looks like they already are. But I just, to change the whole way that we function, that this whole program functions just based on two, this is an anomaly.
And there's one more thing, I'm going to make it a little more difficult, is at.
Oh, could you please?
Sorry. At the previous meeting, you did vote to reconsider your resolution. So, having already voted to reconsider the resolution, you're now here tonight to do the reconsideration. So, you can all reconsider and say, I wanna leave it the way we had already decided it and award that thousand dollars rightly or wrongly, at least the amount is correct. Or you can actually reconsider and give them more or give them nothing.
That's the step two. Right now, we're on step one, which is, figure out what the.
Okay.
Councilmember Abel.
I have a context question that probably Councilmember Schuster will understand more than I do. But you said in previous years, there were different numbers of grant cycles. For example, last year, there were three grant cycles, and now we're down to one grant cycle. So, can you tell me like the mechanism of how that's changed and the reasons why?
Well, we tried to streamline it and bring it, you know, bring it more uniform within our, within the context of, of the committee. I don't believe that there's any, anything codified as to when it starts and when it ends. It was just basically upon the, the, uh, within, within the, within the committee itself. Okay? So, uh, we were trying to bring it all together into one. Because at one point, there was like three or four, especially during COVID and post-COVID. It was a mess. It was a shambles because there weren't school. There was nobody, there was nobody in, in school for the, for the year. Part of it was remote learning and, and in-house learning. So, it was, it was, it was all kinda jumbled, and they were trying to do the very best that they could do under the circumstances. The first full year back in school, they ended up being three cycles, uh, just with the, the way it fell out. And that was just the way it happened. In this last year, uh, the, the committee tried to, you know, rein it in and bring it to more uniform, uh, rules and, and, and processes going forward. And so, that's why they tried to limit it to the one cycle. Because there's nothing codified. This is just internal.
Thank you. That, that really helps. It sounds like this can partially be resolved by the school, by the school support committee themselves, by if they wanna open another grant cycle. It sounds like they have the purview to do that. Is that correct?
I, I would imagine so, yeah.
Because if we, if we raise it to two thousand.
I mean theoretically, because there's nothing really written in any of the rules.
Well, then why are we having this discussion?
She's trying to codify.
Because right now, they had decided there was one grant cycle, so I'm trying to work with what we have.
But this is their, so this isn't codified, though. They can decide to have one grant cycle, and next year, they could decide to have two or they could decide to have three.
Right, but right now, we're dealing with right now, they've decided that there was one. And now, really, the issue is it was opened up again. And what are we going to do with awarding PISO and Temple Terrace Elementary School going forward?
Okay, but didn't they de facto open up a second grant cycle? Because they presented us with the grants.
Right, and how much are you going, you know, and, and you need to decide, though. It is codified how much you can give. That is codified.
I know, but now we're tangled up around the idea that we can't give them any more money because it's outside the grant cycle. And turns out, that's not even codified, that that's within the school supports committee's purview to open up another grant cycle.
And, and that is within their purview unless you decide to give them specific guidance and rules.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Fernandez.
So, I think my concern with, I think they can open as many grant cycles as they want, and I don't have an issue with that. However, when you open the grant cycle, you have to advertise it to everybody, not just a couple of people, because then it's not really open. Like, the other, other schools didn't ness, I don't know, I don't know this, if other schools had an equal opportunity to present projects in what is essentially a second grant cycle. I don't have any issue, if we said, if, if the grant deadline is in September or whatever the deadline is, they go through, they, they award all the grants, they have money left over. I don't have any issue with the school support committee opening a second grant cycle or a third grant cycle if that timing is there. However, it has to be advertised to every single school equally in order to be fairly applied. And this situation was not, at least to my knowledge, I don't, I don't know. So, but, so I don't see the need to codify. The school support committee can set their grant cycle. They can, and then they can, if we say grants, we, we're gonna raise the grant limit to two thousand dollars, they, they get their grant cycle. Schools apply. Special projects will fall into this, at least based on the amounts that we see requested. They're all equal opportunity. If at the end of that grant cycle, they've awarded all the grants that came in, there's still money left, they can say in their meeting, we are opening another grant cycle. We don't have to do anything about that here. And then they advertise it, and then everything can be fairly awarded. That, that I can get behind.
Okay, so let's see if we can land the plane here. We have a motion on the table to increase the grant awards up to two thousand dollars, and we've made it clear that special project type things are eligible. I think we're all agreed on that part.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, are we agreed on this part? Okay. We have a motion. We've had exhaustive discussion. I think we're all agreed on this. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? You're clear on what we just did. Now, we have the issue of the two grants. I, I am hearing what Councilmember Fernandez is saying, and I, I think there's some merit in this. If they did not open, if, if they opened another grant cycle, that's within their purview to do that. But if they didn't really open another grant cycle by advertising it the way that they normally do, then can we really say they opened another grant cycle? So, that's the.
No, I wasn't there. I was, I was. Do you know?
Please. Welcome. Gonna have to introduce you. Well, really, it's very simple at this point. So, first of all, we need you to introduce yourself. Second of all, the, the question we need answered, I know there's been a lot of stuff, but there's really only one question we need answered. And that is, when the second grant cycle was opened, or if it was open, was it advertised to all the schools?
Yes. Yes, it was.
Okay.
That's good.
That's the answer we needed. Thank you. Okay, so now the question before us is, do we want to increase the award to these two schools to cover their requests now that we have the ability to do so? And that's up to you.
I'd move to approve the grant requests for Temple Terrace Elementary and, uh, let's see, Temple Terrace Elementary, I can't remember the original numbers here. Um, and to PISO, one in the amount of eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, the other amount of one thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay, well, they already got a thousand, so you only have to increase it to.
Well, gotta reconsider.
No, you voted to reconsider, so forget about the thousand.
The full amount then.
Yes.
Funding him for the full amount as requested.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion. You're satisfied? It was good questions, but I think we got an, a good, favorable answer.
That was the answer I needed.
Okay. Good, good point, though. We good?
That good?
Okay, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? Thank God. Okay. That was a long drive. Are there any other carryover council business items?
Well, I don't know that they're carryo, well, one's carryover.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Okay, so, um, I've had several residents reach out regarding Riverfront Preserve, and I know that, that the city manager and Carl have been in contact with some groups. And so, I just wanted to ask, so the concerns have been that some of the bicycle club members have actually been bicycling on the walking trails. And I don't know what we can do to help keep the bicycle club members off the walking trails, in particular, off the walking trails. And, and my thought is maybe ask all of the bicycle, bicycle club members to sign a pledge that they won't ride the bicycles on the walking trails. Or, I, I don't know, I don't, so I don't know what the results have been, but I know that it was, I was here when the Riverfront Preserve was created, and it was supposed to be a passive preserve park. And I don't necessarily have an issue with the changes that have been made and allowing the bicycle club to use it, but we really need to make sure that the two uses are congruent and not intersecting.
Cityman.
Mayor, could I ask Mr. Langfield to, to come up? He has the most direct experience with this matter, and he can speak to it.
Good evening, Mr. Langfield.
Good evening.
So, Mr. Langfield, the question is, maybe you can refresh sort of our, our understanding of where we are with some of the claims that have been made about the uses and what we've discovered.
A couple weeks ago, I was forwarded an email from a resident that specified some concerns out at the preserve. The day I received it, I went out to the preserve, walked every inch of every trail that was out there to see my, for myself, um, what, uh, what those concerns were and, and to what extent they needed to be addressed. The trails that I walked were all in excellent condition. The signage was all in place with regards to which trails were designated as hiking trails, which trails were designated as biking trails. The, there were concerns about vehicles being locked in to the preserve at the evening. When I left the preserve that night, it was after the time at which the gate would close, and the gate was closed as it should have been. There is a sign clearly on the gate to instruct people to drive up to a specific spot on the road, and the gate will open. It opened. I was able to drive out, and the gate closed behind me as it should. The following day, we installed trail cameras at the trailheads of the hiking trails. Those trail cameras were up for a week. They took over five thousand photographs during that week. Not one of them was of a bicycle on a hiking trail. There was a photo of two individuals on mopeds that had gone onto the trails. Those were not permitted on any of the trails in the preserve, whether they were biking or hiking trails. But during the week, those trail cam, now, I'm not saying that at no time individuals on bicycles have not gone on trails they shouldn't have been. But during the week that we had those trail cameras out, not one did.
So, just, just for the, so that the photographs of the gentlemen that were riding mopeds were shared with our police department. And so, I'm not saying that they can.
were shared with our police department. And so, not saying that they can, what their ability is to do anything at this point, but at least we want to make them aware that this is happening and keep an extra eye out there in case they're patrolling that, this activity, at least that one instance of activity did occur.
When I was out at the preserve that day, I took probably sixty, sixty-five photos of the trails that I walked. All those trails are available, all those photos are still available on the city's U-Drive.
Okay.
Mr. Langfield, what, this is ELAP property that the city acquired? We, we don't own it, right? We're like custodians of it?
We do own the property. We do own the property, but we are custodians of the property, yes.
I, I'm getting tired of this preserve. I, I'm, I'm really ready to just put a fence around it and close it off to the public altogether. I'm, I'm, I'm just tired of this.
We can't do that.
Why not?
Because of the state and the county that paid the majority of the money for it, and the agreement was it would be used for recreation.
Can we give it back?
I could, I could certainly.
I, it just, it doesn't seem to be anything we can do to make people happy with this. We've got neighbors that have cleared off part of the property to use it as their own backyard. We have constant complaints that we investigate and always find out are unfounded. We, it, there just doesn't seem to be anything we can do that's right here. I, I, I'm getting to where I'm at a loss, and I really hate to deprive the public that has enjoyment of this, but I, this is just not working. I, it's constant complaints from people, and then we take staff time to go investigate it and find out they're all unfounded. I, I don't know what more to do. I'm just venting at this point, but, but, okay.
Well, I mean, I'm gonna say, they're not necessarily unfounded. It just means that during the time period that the cameras were up, whoever may have been on the walking trail wasn't on the walking trail. I was told that the person, that the bicycle that went on the walking trail was, interacted with one of the hikers and told them they just wanted to see where the trail went. That doesn't mean that no one ever has gone on, on a bicycle on the walking trail. It just means that during that time period, so it doesn't mean it's unfounded. But I don't, I, I don't agree with you. I think once there's, there will be some sort of equilibrium that we can achieve, but initially, until both parties and both uses are very comfortable with the other party using it, there's gonna be some, some issues, but I don't think that's gonna be permanent.
Right, and, and, yeah, you know, the bike club was mentioned, and, but I gotta mention the trails are, the bicycle trails are not just for the bike club.
True.
They're for any citizen, anybody that wants to use the bikes out there. So it's not just the club that's, uh, that, and, and also, you can't, you can't make any signs or rules to make something 100%. We see that because we've hired additional police officers for traffic control. You know, so we can't even have people do everything correctly on the streets all the time. It's just gonna happen. That, that piece of property is a very, very valuable nature property. I really don't want us to consider giving it back. But I also agree that this has gone on a long time, back when it started, it, it's gone on. So I, I don't have an answer for you either.
We, we will continue to monitor, we will continue to work with the neighbors, we'll get the trail cameras back up and see what we see. Like I said, they were up for a week, just a week or so ago, and we, we will get them back up and take several thousand more pictures and see what else we can see out there.
Thank you, Mr. Langfield. Appreciate your work out there.
Yes, sir.
Any other carryover council business?
I think I have something new.
Okay, that's next. New business in board reports. Actually, the vice mayor's ahead of you, but I was gonna let Mr. McCarthy present, is that okay if he, we, after the presentation? Okay. So we have a presentation by our city engineer, Brian McCarthy, concerning the county's proposed safety improvements for Bullard Parkway slash Temple Terrace Highway. Welcome, Mr. McCarthy.
Good evening, Mayor Ross, City Council. I'm Brian McCarthy, city engineer, and I'm here today to discuss some of the proposed improvements along Bullard Parkway or Temple Terrace Highway that the county has proposed. This is pretty much at the direction of the city. So really, for tonight, really, our outcome or what our goal is, is just to kinda get your feedback and to discuss what the county is proposing. So just a little bit of background on the Bullard Parkway Temple Terrace study. Back in 2017, the County Transportation Planning Organization did a study from 56th Street all the way until US 301 or the Tampa Bypass Canal Trail. In January of '22, city staff and county staff met to discuss implementing some of those recommendations. We kind of focused on 56th to 78th Street for this first phase, just because there's more of the cer, there's some easy or immediate impacts that we can do right now in this first phase. And then in April of this year, again, we kind of met just to discuss some of those concepts. So this was their concept, and I'm gonna kind of break it down to you a little bit better, just because I know there is a lot going on. But again, basically, the concept is from 56th Street to the west, all the way until 78th Street to the east. So in the first area that I kind of wanted to discuss with you about is the bike lanes. Within the first section, from 56th Street to Ridgedale Road, the county is proposing to add these charros within the pavement. The main reason is because there isn't a, an existing roadway shoulder there at the moment. So the charros are kind of the last opportunity, I guess, to get the bicyclists through this section of the city. And in the bottom right screen, you kind of see what the charrel looks like. Moving further east, so Ridgedale to 78th Street, the county is proposing to add the green pavement markings within the shoulders to help identify the, remind drivers that there's bicyclists within the shoulder, more of that visibility access to improve safety. And you can kind of see that figure in the upper right-hand corner and going all the way to the river, and all the way to 78th Street, you can see these green blocks moving throughout Temple Terrace Highway. So one of the new ideas that was brought forward was this idea of a slip ramp. There's a section of the road that we felt that bicyclists might feel uncomfortable, and that's specifically the bridge over the Hillsborough River. So you don't see any green paint on the bridge, but instead, we're suggesting slip ramps. And kind of circled there in red is where the westbound slip ramp would be, and then going eastbound, the county is proposing to use the existing driveway as a slip ramp. And what that kind of looks like here in the next picture, this is a, a picture from Sarasota County along a state road going towards a roundabout. Basically, the bicycle lane is gonna end and kind of add this little on-ramp onto the sidewalk to get them through the uncomfortable or more dangerous area. In this case, it was a roundabout, but in our case, it'll be the Hillsborough County, the bridge over the river. And in the right figure, you kind of see what that's gonna look like, what the county is proposing. One thing that they didn't propose is kind of a, an off-ramp to this, to the sidewalk, so on the other side of the bridge, perhaps adding a, an off-ramp to get the bicyclists back off of the sidewalk and into the bicycle lane. So that would be one of our comments that we're gonna propose to the county. Another proposal is a speed transition. So currently, the existing condition, we have a 30 mile per hour zone from 56th Street to the river, as well as 45 from the river to 78th Street. And what the county is proposing is continuing that 30, 30 miles per hour from 56th Street to the river, but then decreasing the speed limit down to 40 between the river and 78th Street, and then going back to 45 beyond 78th Street. And within their construction plans, just kind of showing you again where you can see that, kind of circled the 40 mile per hour speed limit sign that they're proposing there at Florida College, moving eastbound, and then at a 45 mile per hour speed limit sign there at 78th Street. And moving westbound, we have the 40 mile per hour speed limit there at 78, and keeping the existing sign with the 30 miles per hour there near the river and Florida College. One of the other aspects to this is gonna be signal retiming, as well as a, an LPI or a leading pedestrian interval. So basically, since we're adjusting the speed limits, we felt it be prudent to kind of retime all the signals to make sure traffic is still flowing through the, the corridor as needed. But one of the things that we also requested is something called a leading pedestrian interval, and this gives pedestrians an extra five or 10-second head start through the intersection before the signal goes green. Some of the benefits includes increasing the visibility to pedestrians, and also increasing the likelihood that motors will also yield toward those pedestrians. This is something that the Florida Highway, as well as the county and the city, has also started implementing as well. Just to kind of show you what some of those pictures are, what that idea is about, here you can kind of see that the, on the left picture, the traffic signal is red, with someone who might be a little, someone who might need additional time to make it through the intersection. And then you can also see that the pedestrian signal there is for the crossing to give that person extra time to make it through. And then the figure on the right is from the city of Tampa. I'm against with the red signal, you see the pedestrian crossing signal, the pedestrian's already moving through the crosswalk. The vehicle has to come to a stop, obviously, because of the red light, and it kind of increases that visibility for that pedestrian to get through the intersection before the vehicle starts to make that right-hand turn. Kind of the, one of the larger pieces of this project is a pedestrian crossing that's occurring near the library. So the county came up with three different options for us to consider. I, I kind of wanted to just give you a snapshot of what the existing condition looks like. So what the, this is Bullard and Broadway, looking west towards Waverly Terrace and 56th Street. One of the things I circled in red is that there is a emergency flashing signal for the fire station that is flashing yellow. And looking west along Bullard Parkway, and you can see the library there in the, in the left-hand side of your screen, as you're approaching this intersection. So some of the concepts was a pedestrian traffic signal. This is the first one that we kind of discussed. They currently have this at Fletcher and Walmart, oh, Fletcher at the Walmart intersection, just west of Bruce B. Downs. It's just a typical traffic signal going through the green, yellow, red progression. And what that is gonna kind of look like at the library is, you can see Broadway there to the north, the crosswalk there, to the west of the library, east of the fire station. The green represents there is kind of a, an increase of the median width, or what the median is gonna kind of look like. It's gonna be a, a concrete curbing, curbing, I guess, around the, the middle of the road. You can also see the brightly green charros that are also in the outside lanes. The second concept that they came up with is the rectangular rapid flashing beacon. And again, these are on Fletcher Avenue, as you approach Wawa, again, west of Bruce B. Downs. You can kind of try to circle here in red. Again, there's gonna be kind of these flashing yellow lights that would appear when a pedestrian hits the signal. And this is what the county is proposing here. So you can see with the, the green middle median access there, they're actually one of the, excuse me, they're proposing to close down the entrance to the library there. There's, there currently is a left-hand turn lane that allows you to turn into that complex, but with the way the signal would be orientated in the zigzag, so to speak, of the crosswalk, you're gonna lose that access. So that is one thing to consider. The other thing to consider is that with the fire station, I mentioned the emergency yellow flashing lights, having those might, I won't say confuse a driver, but it'll be a lot of yellow flashing going on if there's a pedestrian there. So that's something to consider with this option. The third option that they provided is a hybrid, a HAWK, basically is a high-intensity activated crosswalk beacon. We see this at Bush Boulevard and Overlook Drive here in the city, that's on a, the state road. Essentially, the traffic signal there is gonna flash yellow, go to like a steady red to allow the pedestrian to cross, and then flash red, that if there's a pedestrian there, vehicles can start driving through. And again, something similar to what the previous concept looked like, the county is suggesting that the access to the library with the left-hand turn be closed in order to fit the signal in the crosswalk. Bus stations, so along the corridor, there is no existing bus station between 56th Street and 78th Street. I reached out to the Hart planners today. I'm just waiting to hear back to see if they have any future concepts, if there's any proposed routes to occur in the future. We'll at least coordinate with Hart to make sure that if they do intend on extending a, a route or pushing through there, we'll at least make sure that coordination occurs so that there isn't a bus stop at a non-signalized intersection.
Brian, wait, I know it's not time for questions, but this slide, where's the bus stop? Is that where the red circle is?
Uh, the red circle would be approximately where the crossing is. So 56th Street, I believe is like number six route, and the 39 is also on 56, and it goes west.
So no buses go down Bullard? There's no, well, there's no stops on Bullard?
There's no stops between 56th and 78th. So there is between 78th and Davis.
Okay, thank you.
So the cost and funding, just for all these different options. For the bike lanes, the county is estimating around $99,000 slip ramps, roughly $2,000. The speed transition area would be 70, signal retiming 15. Those first four items, the county said that they would be able to accomplish with their county funds that they have within their budget. When we start looking at the resurfacing at roughly $2 million, that's when the county, we're gonna get a lot of pushback, I guess, from the county, just because of the dollar figure. We're currently not within their five-year plan to resurface Bullard Parkway slash Temple Terrace Highway. Some of the suggested improvements from that 2017 study, we would try to accomplish during the resurfacing efforts, such as narrowing lanes, if that's something that we want to do, to add like a, a buffer bike lane, to kind of give more comfort to a bicyclist. But again, that probably wouldn't occur until a resurfacing happens, so we can restrip the road to kind of fit that new street design. For the pedestrian crossing, the, out of the three options, again, they range from about $500,000 up to $600,000. So in terms of funding, discussing it with the county, we were thinking about going after a Safe Streets for All Grant, which is through the infrastructure bill, to at least accomplish the pedestrian signal. That would be the, the piece that the county doesn't have any funding for. The other option is to also continue pursuing the Transportation Planning Organization funding with DOT, to where if the Safe Streets for All Grant doesn't work out, we at least are continuing down the, the safety route to go after state funds to get some of this work accomplished. And then again, there's always the city or county funds. For instance, the county is willing to do the more minor work to get these improvements done now rather than later. And by now, I, I mean in the relatively short timeframe, not this fiscal year. And with that, I'm available for any questions or comments, but again, this was just a, an opportunity to bring forth what the county has presented. Before we move forward with design and public workshops, we kind of wanted to bring this to the city council to kind of get your feedback and comments that we can maybe take back to the county.
Can you go back to the slide that shows the, the three slides that show the possible crosswalk configurations?
I'll start with the first one, which is the, this is just the typical pedestrian green, yellow, red, typical traffic signal.
Yeah, but go to the, okay, that's the one. So in this scenario, we don't lose the left turn into the library?
That's correct.
But in the other two, we do?
Yes.
So why can't the HAWK system be made to go straight across the road like this? So that we could, why does it have to have that jog in the median?
One reason is to allow the pedestrian to cross like one side of the road at a time, if it is taking them a little longer than normal. This, at least with the red light, you, you have that straight shot to get them all the way across. And that's the HAWK and the rapidly flashing beacon, for instance, would have, you, you see that zigzag and everything, just to kind of give that pedestrian an opportunity to stop, catch their breath if they need to, and continue on if need be, because vehicles aren't necessarily gonna stop when they see that flashing yellow, for instance. They're gonna look for that pedestrian.
I'm just concerned about you losing that left into the library.
Mm-hmm. And that is something to consider.
Councilmembers?
What's the, what would be the proximity of the street, the signals to the fires, the firehouse signals?
So, the signal itself, I would say it's, it's right across... So the signal itself, I would say it's, it's right across from their, from their bay.
200 feet?
If that. To the library?
You, to me, to me, run the risk of a traffic jam, you know, because you guys, when you guys coming out, it could be anytime.
And again, counsel, we do have the option to go with a no build or not to select any of the options as well, if that's something you would like to consider.
Well, my question is, why wouldn't it actually be, do we have so many people crossing in the middle? I can see where there's a long space between 56th Street and Ridgedale, but is this like the absolute middle? I mean, would it not make, okay, so that would be the most logical place for breaking up this, this space?
That gap.
I mean, because it would make, at least in terms of the proximity to the fire department's signal, if we went a little bit closer to Ridgedale, that would alleviate that issue.
The closer we get to Ridgedale, the more likely that left turn lane is going to have to close.
And the fewer people we use to crosswalk, because the people that are crossing there are getting off the bus. And they're not going to walk further down past the library to get, yeah. That's been the sticky thing about this whole project is it's close proximity to 56th Street and then the fire station. That's what's made this particularly tricky. So what is it that you're looking for us to do tonight?
Just to solicit feedback and comments, if there's something in here that you automatically are thinking, no, we don't want that, or yes, continue to just move forward with kind of what we're doing right now. For me, I guess it's more about the pedestrian signal, if that's something we want to continue to move forward with. The other items are more the minor improvements that we can certainly get done. It's the pedestrian signal that if we're going to start going after grants and stuff like that, then we kind of need that direction.
The pedestrian signal that goes straight across, the one that's like a regular red light, green light, yellow light, is that activated by the pedestrian who wishes to cross like the HAWK system is?
Yes.
So it stays green unless somebody?
Pushes the button.
Does something. Is there technology available in these systems to actually detect the presence of somebody that's crossing to prevent somebody from just pushing the button and then, you know?
I know, I think along the NLS rail, for instance, I think the city of Dunedin has looked at that, where they have sensors before the street crossing to just activate a HAWK, for instance, so that warns the driver that, hey, there's a pedestrian about to go across that trail.
No, I mean, so that somebody can't just push the button like they, Bush Boulevard, push the button and cause all the traffic to stop, but I never had any intent to cross.
Not that I know of.
Yes.
I like the speed changes, the speed limit changes, particularly when you get east of the river, because you've got the apartments coming in, you've got Florida, Christ, the FCA there, and I know that that's, you know, 45 is just way too fast for that area. And that's just a suggestion, because many, many go much quicker than that. So, and the other, other comment that I have, I like a lot of, but the slip lane, I think you call it?
The slip ramp?
Yeah, the slip ramp, okay. That's, that's cool. I like that. We ought to put those on 56th Street in front of the redevelopment area. I saw a guy almost get wiped out today on that because he couldn't get up on the sidewalk. But that's another, that's another discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
I would be in favor of any of the crossings that would leave the turn lane at the library.
There's only one, that's kind of where.
Well, I don't know why they couldn't do it otherwise. I understand, but that, that's my comment. The other thing, the idea of the slip ramp is a great idea. I would rename it. It just seems, no, it's not safe.
Okay.
Brian, my, I mean, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I agree with the Vice Mayor. I think that the best way to preserve, the only way to preserve that left turn lane, well, there's two options. One, do nothing. And two is if we're going to do something, we have to have a signalized crossing. I think that we should do something. That's been identified for a long time as a dangerous situation. This is not the perfect scenario for another traffic signal. Could it cause traffic delays? Yes. But safety's first, traffic flow is second. And, and so I, I'm not speaking for the council here, this is just my opinion. I think the, the one that preserves the left turn lane offers the most safety, the most direct route to the library is the way to go, I think. But, yes, Councilmember Abel?
So the, the HAWK one is the one that's similar to the ones on the other part of Bush, right, on the other side of 56th?
The Hawks are, yes.
Right. For consistency's sake, I like those the best, and also I think that they're the safest and people are more likely to stop for those than the others. However, the, the left turn lane is, is a casualty of that one. I'd be interested in hearing if there's a possibility of keeping the turn lane along with that. If there isn't, I still like it best, but I would be interested in seeing if they'd be willing to hybridize a little bit.
It's too bad we can't put this, it's probably too close to 56th, but if we could put this crossing down at the fire station and we could combine the, the fire light and the pedestrian light, so the fire department can turn the light red or the pedestrians can turn it red, we have one thing, and people would cross, not obviously in the middle of the ramp, but I mean, off to the side, that's probably too close to 56th Street for a crossing.
I believe the current pedestrian signal that's being proposed is about somewhere between 600 and 700 feet. So if we were to shift it any closer, I would say.
Too close.
It's going to be, yeah, too close for the county to consider.
I think so, too. Yeah. Okay.
Well, I'm in favor of keeping the left turn into the library. So I do agree, if there is a way to create some sort of hybrid crossing, then that would be my preference, but if not, I think the turn lane needs to be, needs to stay. What happens if you don't get grants? Where does the funding, I mean, does the project just get tabled until the funding is available, or are we going to be looking to city funds to pay?
Right now, we still have the option to go through the TPO, through the Transportation Planning Organization. It is pretty high up on their list in terms of safety projects. So, but there, again, they're, they're keeping their, we have to first get into their priority list. So right now, we've made the request. It's just trying to get into that five-year work program to get that project started.
So we wouldn't be trying to fund this with city dollars? We would be waiting on this project until we were able to get funding from a grant or one of the transportation organizations?
At this time, I would say yes. Again, things could change if accidents or crashes start occurring a little bit more or if, again, a fatality were to happen, so to speak. I mean, things can, I think, change depending upon the traffic in the area.
City man?
Just to clarify for the public, so this is a county road, so I would not think that we would be recommending the city invest, you know, be the sole investor in this, in this project. And if we ever got to a point where we'd need to put dollars in, we'd come back to you well before that scenario overdeveloped so that you'd have, you'd give us some input as to what you'd like us to do.
The steps in the process, this is the first step. The second step is once we have a project identified, then advocating to get it on the tip, the annual tip, which I will, along with staff, I would obviously be advocating for that in my, in my role on the TPO as well. So, I do want to also point out, we, in this, we owe a debt of gratitude to Hillsborough County and to the TPO staff. The timetable that Brian put up there earlier when they met January 22, they've been hashing this around for a long time, but that meeting didn't happen arbitrarily. That meeting happened as a result of some conversations with county commissioners, with the county administrator, with Beth Alden at the TPO to kind of spark a, a fire under this. And they told me, okay, we, we'll, you know, we'll advance it, we'll, you know, we'll, and I thought, well, yeah, sure, okay, they're going to advance it. But they did. And they came and met with Brian and Troy or whoever as a result of that. They, I mean, they would have, was already an existing project, but they did elevate it based on our request. So we, both the TPO staff and the county was very responsive about this, so. So.
All right, yep. I have a direction. So again, we'll meet back with the county and start moving forward some more.
Thank you, Brian. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Got a couple board reports. First, the boards that I sit on, Code Board, Board of Adjustment, Library Board, and also the Celebration Committee, but that's another report, they are doing very well. All our boards are functioning very well. They have good leadership, they have good members, there's some openings on them, but we could fill those. But I just want to report, everything's going well. In fact, Code Board, tomorrow, they have a scheduled training session before their regular meeting. That's being done by our legal department and code department, so to keep the members fresh on what they should be looking for and how to run a code meeting. So those boards are going very well. The Centennial Committee, they completed their first year, and last meeting, they elected a new chairman. It has been Sharon Gaskin, but they've elected Nancy Hudson to head that up. Sharon's still on the committee, but they have a new chair for this coming year. And they've been working really hard on developing a procedure and a form to have affiliated events, like the Arts Festival or Arden Blanc or other events, be part of the Centennial Celebration in 2025. So that will be coming to you. It's, the draft form's legal now and it's being reviewed, and it'll come to you guys. So that's my report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Fernandez?
So this is really for our city attorney, and that is Facebook questions. So if you, if you're on Facebook and you see like Temple Terrace Bulletin, et cetera, there are often city questions, and I don't ever answer them because I know that that's not archived. But can you, is, I mean, could we answer a question on Facebook if somebody says, what's going on with the, the space down by the river that we're talking about, you know, potentially making it a park or whatever they're asking about?
There are whole seminars on how you all are supposed to deal with social media, and I suggest that you take one of those. Florida League of City generally puts those on. You can answer, you're a citizen, however you want to avoid at all costs getting into some cross discussion with one of the other council members. So it would be better to just direct the question to somebody within the city and let them answer it. So that's, that's my advice right, right now, so.
Well, that, I mean, I'm not, I just want to have the clarification, when you see the questions to say, you know, if I know the answer.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard not to get sucked into that, but my advice is to err on the side of caution and try to avoid it.
That's it.
New business, board reports. Okay, very good. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back up this evening, you have two investment reports from the police and fire pension funds. As you recall, a few weeks ago, we presented you with an earlier version of the police pension report, and we indicated we return with the fire as well. So you have both of those this evening. I would say I would be happy to answer any questions, but I really don't know what any of this means. I wish I did, because I'd probably have my, my retirement fund would probably be healthier if I did. But Jim Ingram is here if you did have specific questions. Beyond that, may I go to the next item?
Any questions about the pension?
Okay. So the next item is, as I've shared with the city council, we have over the last several months, the police chief, our utilities director and myself been having conversations with Florida College and the administration of Florida College. They have a property on Temple Terrace Highway that is, would be an ideal location for a police station, which is one of the council priorities to locate property for, for a new police station. Those conversations evolved to the point, after several months of going back and forth, where we were presented with an offer by the college just this past weekend. I've shared that offer with the council. We are quite apart in my, as far as I'm concerned, with, where I would recommend the city council accept this offer. I would not recommend the city council accept the offer. It is an initial offer, I understand that, but it's, it has, it's asking for so many items that I don't know if we could ever bridge that gap. However, I understand, and the reason I bring it up this evening is obviously I defer to you. If you'd like me to go back to them, I would be happy to do so and see if we can't come to, to some reasonable term that would be mutually acceptable. Alternatively, as I've mentioned in the past, one other option that we put on the backburner because we were having these conversations in good faith with the college, is the, is looking at the property we have here at City Hall. Not only do we have the City Hall building, the parking lot here, it's adjacent to City Hall across 113th, we have an additional parking lot, and we've made a request of Hart to acquire their two-thirds of that lot also. That, in my estimation, is sufficient property to do a lot. We, and what I, if the council prefers me not to go back to Florida College and instead look at something else, what I would recommend is allow me to talk to one of our consulting engineers, come up with a proposal, a scope of services, where they could potentially do a conceptual design of using our city property here and see if it would accommodate a, a police station in a City Hall complex, because we own this property. So those are sunk costs already. So that's an alternative. There might be other alternatives you've thought of as well, so I just kind of like to have some direction.
Council?
I'll start. I'm in favor of pursuing the property we already own, and I'd like to see us go in that direction.
I agree. I don't need a 100-year lease involved with anything that we're dealing with, so I would agree with pursuing what we already own and with the hope to secure the Hart property.
The same for me.
I agree. I think we should look at developing the property that we already own. I think that's the most cost-effective.
I agree. So let me ask you a quick question, or hopefully a quick question. And I don't know if you know the answer to this off the top of your head, because I didn't think about this before. 113th Street out here, that's a city street, is it not?
I believe it is a city street.
I think so, too. Is it etched in the constitution that that has to remain open?
Unless there's some detail that I'm unaware of, typically, if you own property on both sides of the city street, you're able to vacate the street because you're the underlying landowner, particularly if we own the piece that belongs to Hart. So that's something I think we could look at, because that would add an enormous amount of area.
And the reason that I bring that up is because when we've looked at a police station across the street in the past, we were concerned about not having a big enough footprint to accommodate parking and having the possibility of having to put parking within the structure, which obviously makes the construction a whole lot more expensive. If we didn't have that street open, we've got a much bigger footprint there, we probably won't need to put cars inside the structure. So I just wanted to, when you're talking to engineers about this, that might be an option. So, okay. Good? Is that what you needed?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
City attorney?
I have nothing.
Nothing. Anybody, the faithful remnant here. Councilmembers, anything for the good of the order?
Good.
All right. If not, we'll stand adjourned. All right, if not, we'll stand adjourned.